Hello and welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debate. Thanks for joining us, I'm Amanda Harnotes. Today we're hosting a debate for three out of seven Maple Heights City Council seats. The candidates will introduce themselves in a minute, but first here's the rules. We will start with one minute for each candidate to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer and a minute for any follow-up. So let's get started. First, we'll start with Ebony Miller. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Ebony Miller. I'm running for City Council District 3. I'm a 12-year resident of Maple Heights. I am currently Vice President of Risk and Compliance for a local large bank. I'm also a Psychological Operations Officer for the U.S. Army Reserve. And the reason I'm running for City Council is I actually purchased my home about 12 years ago. I moved away to Chicago for work and came back and noticed a drastic change in the city. So therefore, when I noticed that we also went into fiscal emergency, I figured it was time for me to use my financial background to make a difference in the city. And going through to the City Council meetings and meeting with the City Council, current City Council, I noticed there's not a lot of financial background on the current City Council, which is something that is needed, especially when you're making decisions on the budget, when you're making decisions on how to get us out of a financial emergency. Those are things that I think I can bring to the table, and my reason for running.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll have Sharie Thomas.
Thank you for having me today. Once again, my name is Sharie Thomas, and I'm running for City Council in District 6. And I have earned my BA from Cleveland State University in Urban Studies. I am a graduate of Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Program. I am a successful entrepreneur and businesswoman, and I love to the fact that I was the only female firefighter in East Cleveland. So I've accomplished quite a few things in my life. And the reason I'm running for City Council is it would have been easy for me to leave. I've been a resident of the city for 10 years. I love the community. It was either leave or stay to make a difference, and I decided to stay to make the difference. So I decided to run for City Council, and I believe that the background that I have, I have an entrepreneurial spirit, and I believe that's very important when you're looking at trying to develop a community. I see the city, which was once had a lot of glory, and now it's suffering some financial situations, and I believe that my background can play a huge part in making a difference.
Great, thank you. And Ron Jackson will introduce himself now.
Hi, I'm Ron Jackson. I'm running for reelection in the City of Maple Heights Council District 4. Been in Maple Heights about 20 years. Been involved in city politics for about the last 15, about 15 years. I have run for council before. This is ending my first term. And the reason I want to run for reelection, oh, let me go back a little bit. I've done so many things in the city before I was elected. I was on the Planning and Zoning, which I was chairman of. I volunteered at the Senior Center. I helped out in the Building Department. I've done a lot of things leading up into this. One of the reasons I'm running for reelection is I really didn't get a chance to do a lot of things that I hoped I was going to be able to do. And our city is in a big financial situation right now. And my background, I think, also lends itself to that. I was a business owner, a self-employed in the construction industry. I'm familiar with budgets, with contracts, and all those things go in to help operate the city, and I think I could do and continue, will do, a good job in that.
Thank you, and thanks for joining us. Ron just mentioned the serious financial problems in the city, and that leads me to my first question, which is it's been declared in the state of a fiscal emergency. What would you do to tackle this problem? We'll start this with Ebony. You have 90 seconds to respond.
Okay. As a former financial regulator for the Department of Treasury, I've seen banks that were at the brink of, you know, possibly being taken over or failing, and I've worked with them to bring them back to a healthy state, which I can see Maple Heights would be the same situation. So what I plan to do is, what I've discussed before, is to work on economic development by marketing new businesses to possibly come to Maple Heights, as well as building better relationships with our existing businesses. This will help us grow our tax base. Another way that we can work on is actually working on our budget, looking at things in there that we possibly can either minimize the cost, or another way that we can raise additional funds that do not affect tax, our tax base, or homeowners, and that won't affect their property taxes, that we can use to bring more revenue to the city. Another thing that we can do also is to look for ways that the city can make funds available to not only our homeowners, who need to possibly bring up their property values. Like, there's a lot of ways we can bring in grants to fix up the elderly homes, or to fix up low-income homes. They can start raising property values again, which will also raise our tax base.
Thank you. Sharie, how'd you like to respond?
Well, I think, once again, you really have to have an entrepreneurial spirit in dealing with this situation. And I think I'm going to echo many of your same sentiments. You really have to look at the budget. I hear a lot about raising taxes and things like that, but bringing more money in without a financial plan is ridiculous. You'll just end up spending more money. So the first thing I think is priority, is setting a five, short-term, mid-range, and long-term goals for our community. Determining what's important and what's not. I think one of the things that is really important is doing business differently. There may be other ways, and I'm sure there are in our city, that we could do things more efficiently. Being in corporate, you know, you have to look at those things, and looking at that financially, looking at budgets, looking at not just cutting, but also being creative in bringing more revenue in, not only through, like you said, through business development, housing development, and different things that we need to do. So there are a lot of things we could do.
Okay, thank you. Ron, what would you do to tackle this problem?
Again, I'm going to kind of echo some of the things they said. I can agree with both of those things. Unfortunately, there's only a couple of things you can do. We have to increase revenue, or we have to cut expenses. Over these last couple of years, the cutting has been happening. The revenue is lagging, but to have an economic development person going out there looking for new businesses, I think is critical to this. Hopefully, we can find some. We have a South Gate Shopping Center that I know is out looking for businesses, and we have stores that hopefully they can get filled. New housing development kind of goes along with the economy. It goes up and down. When money's available, possibly we could get some new housing development. We've had some people looking at some senior development, and we just had recently, in the last few years, one completed. So we hope we can kind of add on to those kind of things.
Okay, great, thank you. Like I said, with the rules, you now have 60 seconds to respond further if you'd like. So Ebony, if you'd like to say more, you can now. Okay, Sharie?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. I think being creative, being in business, you have to be creative. I think looking at some private-public partnerships, I think soliciting developers. Right now, we're not making ourselves attractive to people who want to develop in your community. We have to, I think, upgrading our image. I think housing development, there are, I think, even looking in other communities who have successfully pulled themselves out of these kinds of financial situations, looking at some things that work in other communities. I think that we have some options that we have not explored.
Okay, thank you. Ron, you have 60 seconds as well, if you'd like to say more.
I just think it's going to take a collective, everybody working together with our new mayor, which we will have a new mayor, and a lot of people, new people on council. We just have to sit around the table and figure out how to get this thing done.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to our next question. Assuming that cuts will have to be made to survive this financial crisis, how would you cut the city's budget? I think we'll start with Sharie for this question. You have 90 seconds to respond.
Well, I think we're cut almost to the bare bones. I don't know where else we can really cut. I think the only thing that we can't, I don't see cutting fire. I don't see cutting police. We can't cut city services. We've cut in a lot of other areas. I think, once again, maybe some partnerships with other communities where we could bring in, work with some of our neighboring communities to partner so that we can share resources. But that's something that, as, once I become City Council and looking at that budget and looking at what's left to cut, then I think at that point, we can see if there's anything really left for our community to cut, and still be a viable community.
Okay, thank you. Ron, what would you cut?
Well, after looking at this budget for the last couple of years, like Sharie said, there's very little left to cut. Our police are at an all-time low. Our fire are at an all-time low. Our Building Department is almost nonexistent. So cutting is almost not off the table, but it's very difficult to do. We've asked for salary reductions, which we have had some. Their partnership is good, and I think not only with other cities, but even with our school system, I think some of the things like as far as recreation. Hopefully, we better develop that partnership with them so that we can intertwine those two things together. It's just tough to cut anymore.
Okay, thank you. Ebony?
I guess I'll echo the same sentiment. There isn't much to cut. I did review the budget for last year, and there were a few things that I figured we could possibly right-size. Like, some of the salaries within the public workers within the city are a little bit higher than some of our neighboring cities, so those can be right-sized a little bit, but, you know, that can also lead to vacancies within the city, so it's something that would have to be discussed. But what we can do is looking at bringing back jobs that were revenue makers, such as our Economic Development Director, our Property Inspectors, and things like that. And actually, our Tax Collector. We don't have one right now, which, of course, is something that we need, considering we have a very low percentage of people who pay their city income taxes. So we can start bringing back jobs like that. I think they'll more than cover their salaries, and that'll actually help the budget at this time.
Okay, thank you. Sharie, you have 60 seconds if you'd like to say any more about this. Okay, Ron?
Just the one thing I would like to say. There is a lot of outstanding money out there, and it's trying to figure out just how to get it. There's a lot of money on the table from our Rita Tax. We have had discussions with how to get that money in. One bad thing, and even with our property tax for our houses, right now, the bad thing is people are just walking away from their debts, and it's hard to then try to find them to get that money out of their pocket and get it back into the city coffers. But again, it's something that we have to do, and we're going to have to figure out a way to do it.
Okay, thank you. Ebony, you have 60 seconds more if you want it. Okay, we're going to move along. There is a levy on the ballot for senior citizen services. Is this something that you support? Ron, you can answer this one first, you have 90 seconds.
Well, first, I want to correct that wording on that is bad, even though that's the way that it is on the ballot. It's not just senior services, it's human services department. And in that, it's more than just things for seniors.
Okay.
I think seniors make up a critical part of our neighborhood. To make our neighborhood whole, I think we need our seniors, we need our people who are revenue generators when it comes to taxes, and our children. So to kind of cut out one of those things, to me, would be a negative for our city. I have worked on the senior levy before. I volunteer at the Senior Center. I have a lot of contact with the seniors, and it's when you sit down next to them and you hear where they are, when you hear that the only hot meal that they get a day may be at our lunch at the Senior Center, or to our home-delivered meals, then it's kind of hard to start saying that we should do without that. And it's just much more than that also. They help with a lot of social programs with our seniors. I would hate to lose it. But if it gets turned down, it's not in the budget for next year, so if this levy doesn't pass, that department just might close, and that would be a shame.
Okay. Ebony, you have 90 seconds.
I agree with him. I do support the bill. When you look at the actual cost per household for average-sized home in Maple Heights, it is very minimal. What was it, $1.90 a month? Which is something we can cover for something that's so important to the city. However, as you said, it's not just for seniors. It is something that we need to use more of a community center. So I would like to see it increase its services to the entire community, not just the seniors. So we do need to include more things for youth, because right now, we do have a growing crime rate, and a lot of that crime is due to our juveniles, which we need to give them more recreation so they can possibly not be out committing crimes, but active doing something else. That could possibly help the community. And also, with the size center that it is, actually, it could be a self-generating thing. For instance, if we open a community daycare in there, we can get so many grants that it could partially fund itself. So it's other avenues that we need to look at, to not only use that levy, but to find other ways that we can make sure it's something that stays within the community, and we're not constantly looking for a levy every couple of years. So we need to look more long-term on this.
Okay, thank you. Sharie, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, I think that raising the taxes or levies is not always the answer. It's a very temporary solution, and we've seen so many levies in our community fail. I don't, if this doesn't pass, then what's Plan B? And I think that even though it's $1.90 per household, that's an additional $1.90 on top of the however many other taxes that we receive on every aspect of our lives. And so I think what I do kind of echo their sentiment in looking at a whole restructuring that is not something just for seniors. There's a senior department, there's a youth department, there's a recreational department, and I like what you said in terms of partnering with the school or some other entities. I am not opposed to looking at our community, creating a community development center. That's something that could potentially take this responsibility. We have to look at some other issues other than just taxes or creating levies, because our community is not going to always support those.
Okay, thank you. Ron, if you'd like, you can respond.
The only thing I would like to add to that is our Recreation Department for our youth was also run out of the Human Services Department. So, and that was one of the things, unfortunately, that got cut this year. I definitely hope to want to bring that back.
Okay, thank you. Ebony, would you like to add more?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Okay, Sharie?
Yes. I think that we don't use a really good resource in our community, which is the churches. I think that some of the things that the senior citizens or the senior center, some of the services that it provides, could potentially be done in some of these other facilities. We have some well-organized churches where, you know, heat can be taken care of, or other services that the senior center, food programs. Some of those things can be absorbed through some of the other community resources, and they can find funding for those things through food banks and other resources.
Okay, great, thank you. We're going to move on to our next question. This year, the city will have a new mayor. Jeff Wansky is not seeking reelection, so I'm wondering which candidate do you support? Is it Annette Blackwell or Bill Brownlee? I think we're back around to Ebony again, so you can start this one.
I won't say I've completely vetted who I'm voting for, but if I had to vote today, it would be Annette Blackwell. Reason being, Annette Blackwell has shown a lot of commitment to the community, as far as not just the city, but with the schools, and she's really dedicated to the city. As far as Brownlee, like I said, I haven't completely vetted who I'm voting for. Brownlee is very much against change. She's not a person who just goes along to get along, so that I do appreciate, but if I had to vote today, it would be Annette Blackwell.
Okay, thank you. Sharie?
Well, you know, the residents will decide who our mayor will be, and that's who I'm going to support. Both candidates have their pros and they have their cons. I know Bill personally, so he's a good friend of mine, and I've known him through the city, so I kind of, like you said, he's not the kind of guy that's going to, he challenges things. Annette Blackwell, she has that tax skill, she works for a tax company, so she, you know, she may be able to deal with, that's where her skills are. So what I'd like to say is that depending on whoever gets in, and if I am on City Council, I'm going to support them 100% and stand behind the leadership of my city.
Okay, thank you. Ron, if you had to pick?
I like that answer.
Ditto.
One thing, right off the bat, I will agree with whoever the mayor is. It's bigger than just that person. We're talking about the city. So yes, we will, and we should support whoever that person is. And if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, I would definitely work with whoever that person is. If I had to pick a person right now, I would pick Annette Blackwell.
Okay, thank you. Would you like more time to say anything more? Okay, Sharie, would you like more time?
No.
Ron?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, next question. And it was actually brought up already about regionalism, and it's fitting, because Sharie, you're up to answer first next. So where do you stand on regionalism? Would you consider merging with another city? You have 90 seconds.
Well, Maple Heights' history is they come out of another city. I mean, if you look back at how we started, we at one time was a part, we were a part of Bedford, and so we created our own independence, our own identity, our own community, our own government. And I think one thing about, I'm not really sure how I support regionalism. I think you lose a lot of your identity. I believe that it helps in terms of resources, so there are a lot of shared resources there. I think that smaller cities, sometimes it is a benefit for a smaller city who is running out of resources, but you lose your identity that way. And people, our community identified with Maple Heights, and so I think there are some pros to it, but I think there's also some cons to it. And it's something that would have to work for us as a community, and that would be something that we would have to decide together.
Okay, thank you. Ron, how do you feel about regionalism and possibly merging?
That would be such a task that would take years. That definitely isn't something that would happen right away, that would solve our problems right away. But I think, but inside of the cities, I think, is where your regionalism is better. Just this year, we've opened a call center with about five suburbs, and they share resources. They have purchased equipment together. So that type of regionalism inside of the city itself, I think, is something to look for versus cities becoming one, because who's going to be the big dog after all that's done? And that would be the fight. Everybody want their little kingdom, and nobody would want to give up that. Now, that's to say that it shouldn't happen, I'm just saying that's, you know, some of the issues that we definitely would face if we tried that.
Okay, thank you. Ebony, how do you feel about regionalism and the possibility of merging?
I believe that Maple Heights should not merge. Reason being is we are very similar to our surrounding cities that we would merge with, but I think we're very different at the same time. The people and the issues that we have in Maple Heights and the homeowners, they'll tell you that we have some of the same things they have in Bedford, but we're still very different, and we kind of have a bond between us. So I wouldn't want to just dissolve our city into another city, because, of course, we wouldn't take anyone over. And the media has tried to compare us to East Cleveland, who's, you know, possibly being dissolved into Cleveland, and we're not East Cleveland. We're still fighting. We're going to come out of this fiscal emergency, and we're going to come back as a strong, stable Maple Heights, which is the plan if we can get on City Council and work together.
Thank you. You have 60 seconds if you'd like to say more.
I think, once again, I think that when you look at merging, I think that merging resources is probably a great way of maybe, like you said, not government, but looking at how we can create partnerships, how we can tap into, other cities can tap into the resources that we have, as well as us being able to tap into some of the resources that other cities have, and share that financial burden. I think those are some of the things that are the benefits of merging, along with the detriments of merging, but I would love to see us being able to do that, being able to share some resources.
Okay, thank you. Ron, would you like to add more?
I think we covered it. I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Did I ask if you need more time? I lose track with three.
No. I do have a chance to address your sharing resources, but I do agree that that would be a benefit.
Okay, moving on then. Thank you for being honest. Last question. I'm going to keep it really open-ended and let you, you know, talk about whatever is important to you with this race, so whatever you'd like to discuss as your final 90 seconds. Who are we with? Ron? Ron, we're with Ron.
First, I want to thank you for having us here. I think one of the most important things that we do need to do is we need to develop trust, more trust with our residents, so that when, if we do have to put any type of levies on a ballot, that they trust us, that we're going to do right with them and buy them with that money, that we're working to make sure every dollar that is spent is spent wisely, you know, that we do have now, that everybody is out for the residents and for our city, not for any individual glory, per se. Really want to work with people, want to work with the rest of council, and work with our mayor, and want to just get the work done that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Ebony?
Summing to what Ron said, the change needs to be made in Maple Heights, and I think we do have some very passionate people running for office this time. For instance, I went to a printer the other day, they said I've never seen so many people who've come for flyers to be mailed out in Maple Heights, because everyone who's running is truly passionate about making a difference, which is exactly what's needed right now, considering our standing fiscally, as well as what we need to do as far as bringing our name back. Because Maple Heights right now does not have the best name as far as an inner-city suburb, but we're here to restore that. Like I said, I want to bring not only my financial experience, but also my leadership experience to help make a change. I am here because it's what's needed. I want to be a more fiscally sound City Council, and I think that we can correct the budget to make this a good place and to restore the city.
Okay, thank you. Sharie?
Maple Heights.
Sharie, I'm so sorry.
Maple Heights is such a, it's a great place. It has so much potential, and I believe that with the right leadership, the right vision, the right commitment, we can turn our community around. We have a lot of great resources. I mean, we're close to the highway, we have hospitals, we have entertainment, we're a few minutes from everywhere, and so it's a really great city. It's a bedroom community, you know, it's a walk-in community. It has so much potential. I have three goals. My first goal is to work, is to restore the strength and fiscal stability of Maple Heights, to work with my colleagues to ensure that happens, to work collaboratively with political and business leaders to develop and implement a comprehensive economic plan, and to focus on increasing the quality of life for all of our citizens. And I think that's something that we have missed a lot of, and so I think that's an important piece, back to what Ron was saying, in terms of trust and transparency and commitment to not only the financial portion, but to our residents.
Okay, thank you. In keeping with the rules, if you'd like an additional 60 seconds, you can have it.
I'll take a few of those seconds.
Sure.
And I want to go off, just a little bit off-track here, and with the people who are watching this, I want them to know that Maple Heights is ready, we're looking, we're the new businesses, if you need warehouse space, if you need retail space, Maple Heights has it. They also have a community that will support those type of things. So all you business people who are looking for somewhere else to put down headquarters, come to Maple Heights.
Thank you. Ebony, again, keeping with the rules, you have an additional minute if you'd like it.
Great pitch, Ron. Basically, is one thing that we are... Next thing is, one thing that we always want to talk about is make sure you're getting out and voting. Whoever you're supporting, just make sure your vote is counted, and make sure that you actually get out and make your voice heard.
Ebony, thank you. Sharie?
And I'd like to say thank you to you all for allowing us to come in, to allow our voices to be heard. It's important to know the people that are going to govern, who are going to be your leaders, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to allow us to be transparent and to really share our vision and our goal for our community. So thank you very much, and I really look forward, hopefully, if we all, you know, if we're sitting next to each other in that room, working together with these are great people here.
Great, and thank you for joining us. It was a pleasure having you. Thanks again to our viewers for watching. Please check back to cleveland.com to read stories about the debates, issues, and candidates for this election, and early voting started on October 6th, so thank you.